Item six to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Chen.
Here.
Councilmember Yu.
Here.
Mayor Proten Man.
Here.
Mayor Sternquist.
Here.
Okay, we move to item three, the invocation. We have Chaplain Tarek with the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, Temple Station, who will be providing the invocation this evening. Chaplain Tarek has been an ordained chaplain for 23 years and a chaplain for the L A S D Temple City Station for 19 years. He mainly serves at Temple City Station, but he has also provided ministry and support to the Sheriff's Training Academy and Regional Services Star Center in the past. He goes where he is needed. Welcome.
Thank you. Dear God, first of all, I want to say thank you on behalf of all those who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom you have given us. You have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Temple City. It is in your most blessed name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Liz Powell, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item five ceremonial matters. Introduction of our Sister City students going to Hocksberry, Australia. And we have Nancy Terry and Ari Panado. How do you say your last name?
Panado.
Panado. Panado, Temple City Sister Association, and they will introduce the students. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. We're very excited to be here. My name is Ari Panado, and I have the very great pleasure of getting to work with our student ambassadors. They will be introducing themselves and saying something that they are excited about doing in Australia.
Hello, my name's Olivia Castro. I'm a current junior, and I'm looking forward to getting to experience a different type of schools.
Good evening, my name is Emilio Madrigal, and I am also, let me change this real quick, I'm also a junior, and I would say that I am very excited to learn about a new type of culture that I have not experienced yet and bring that here, hopefully. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Phoenix, and I am most looking forward to spending time with my Australian host family.
Just move the mic if you need to. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leilani Garcia. I'm a current junior at Temple City High School, and I'm most excited to experience Australia and visit all of the good lunch spots.
The good what?
Lunch spots.
Hello, I'm Aaron Wong. I'm currently a sophomore at Temple City High School, and I'm most excited to explore independence on my own for the first time without my parents.
That concludes our ambassador introductions. We just want to thank the City Council for all your support, and we look forward to hopefully seeing you guys at our popcorn booth this summer.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for coming.
We have something to give to them.
We have certificates for you.
No.
They're all here, Peggy, with the... Would you like to come up to take a picture also? Aaron? Thank you. Olivia? Emilio? Leilani? And Phoenix. Never had a spoon in my building with Phoenix, and I've come prepared here. So cool. Come on up. Nancy? You're smart up there, too.
Steve, where are you?
Where is he? Oh, Steve, come on. Anybody?
Come on, I'll photo shop some long pants on you.
We're coming back.
Here we go. Ready? Thank you.
So I think this is the first group that no one said they were looking forward to trying Vegemite. Is it Vegemite? No.
Vegemite. Yeah, Vegemite.
Vegemite, yes.
I love it, though.
You love it? No, I can't. I'm glad someone does.
Okay, item eight is Older American Month proclamation, and I'd like to read that before I call up some of our representatives. Whereas May is Older Americans' Month, a time for us to recognize and honor Temple City older adults and their immense influence on every facet of American society; and whereas through their wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge; and whereas older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities; and whereas Temple City must ensure that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities. Reflecting our commitment to inclusivity and connectedness, and now therefore I, Cynthia Sternquist, Mayor of Temple City, and on behalf of the City Council of Temple City, do hereby proclaim May 2025 to be Older American Month. This year's theme, Flip the Script on Aging, focuses on transforming how society perceives, talks about, and approaches aging. May 6, 2025. Okay, I'm going to invite the Committee on Aging Chair Elizabeth Powell and Vice Chair Anne Seitz to come up and accept the proclamation. And would you come up, get ready to come up also? So stay up here.
She's got.
And we are going to have an update from Liz Powell on the committee.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilpeople. I'm Elizabeth Powell. I have to think about who I am, Elizabeth or Liz today. I serve as the Chair of the Committee on Aging, and I'm joined tonight by Vice Chair Anne Seitz, a few other members of our committee, as well as Tom. We're honored to present the 2025 End of the Year Report highlighting accomplishments and progress made by the Committee on Aging over the past year. This report provides a summary of the committee's accomplishments, ongoing goals, and future, all guided by the 24 action steps outlined in the Senior Master Plan. It specifically highlights the progress made on the action steps that were prioritized in 2024, with a focus on key areas such as health, wellness, and community engagement for older adults. This report is guided by the goals outlined in the Senior Master Plan, which was developed to identify and address the key issues impacting the older adults in our community. The Master Plan outlines 24 action steps that serve as a guide for the city to enhance programs and services for seniors. In response to this plan, the Committee on Aging was established in 2018 to serve as a resource hub while creating partnerships with organizations that align with our mission. Every year, the committee creates an annual report to present progress on these action steps. In 2024, the committee wanted to focus on bringing new programs and activities that the seniors would enjoy and benefit from. Tonight, we wanted to highlight the action steps that were prioritized for the year. Beginning with intergenerational programming, the Tech Hour Volunteer Program was created to assist seniors with learning how to operate new electronic devices. Although the program began just last November, 20 participants learned about navigating their smartphones and online safety. In collaboration with the Temple City Unified School District, we developed a program that brought both the older adults and the youth together. Nine dedicated volunteers assisted with the senior meal program. The volunteers assisted with serving the meals and cleaning the dining room after meals concluded. Another key priority for the committee was to increase socialization activities for seniors. We partnered with the Music Center over the summer to host four musical performances at Lyeville Park for the seniors free of charge. Also, with the assistance of the Parks and Recreation Department, a ukulele club was started. This free class promotes social engagement, and they participate to perform at the annual Senior Luau at Lyeville Park. Within their first year, 504 participants attended, which is pretty awesome. In addition to these programs, the committee was able to address additional immediate short and long-term action plans. A short-term focus was educating seniors about safety alert systems. The Y W C A hosted a fall prevention seminar, which included a live demonstration by a physical therapist. As part of the long-term action steps, the committee also focused on enhancing case management services. Through a partnership with Wellby Health, low-income utility application assistance was offered to seniors. Additionally, the Y W C A also provided a seminar on the case management services that are available through their program. To view the report card in full detail, you can find it on the city website under the Committee on Aging section. Enroll in the senior newsletter, which gets emailed out monthly, or you can request a copy at Lyeville Park Community Center upon request. To conclude, the End of the Year Report reflects the program that the Committee on Aging has made for the seniors in the community. We are committed to expanding and exploring new partnerships to continue bringing in resources and new programs for seniors. We anticipate your time, excuse me, we appreciate your time, support, and commitment to our senior residents.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Picture.
Ruby is what she's our...
Come on, Ruby. We have Ruby, Jelena Russo, Carol Rodebacher.
Hey, everyone.
And Marwan. Mike Wintercorn. She's rusty. Oh, yes. There's a certain part of it.
I think everybody's set up perfectly. We'll take a few shots. Three, one, two. Perfect, thank you so much.
How are you feeling? I didn't know you had surgery. Oh, yes. Oh, my gosh, you didn't laugh. That's why I came under her reception. I was so disappointed. Okay, we move to item six, public comments on items not listed. Oops, done with something. Oh, update. Our update from Los Angeles County Public Works regarding sewer rate increase. We have Andrew, Assistant Deputy Director for Los Angeles County Public Works, and he will provide an update. Welcome.
Thank you. And good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff, and Temple City residents. My name is Andrew Ngumba, and I'm the Division Chief in charge of Sewer Maintenance Division for Los Angeles County Public Works. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here to talk to you about the proposed rate increases in the Sewer Maintenance District. So as an overview, I will go ahead and discuss the Consulate Sewer Maintenance Districts for those who don't know what that is. I will talk about the sewer services we provide for the city's infrastructure. I will talk about financials, including the proposed rate increase, and then we'll talk about how we plan to engage with the residents of the city. The Consulate Sewer Maintenance District is basically a financing district that has been established to collect sewer service charges for the operation and maintenance of sewer systems in 38 member cities and then in corporate county area. We do have more than 500,000 parcels in the district. We serve more than 2 million customers. We have four treatment plants that are actually served by a special service zone, and we also have Edison pump stations and more than 4,600 miles of sewer lines. I will talk about city-specific infrastructure here in a little bit. We do operate under agreements from the cities that have granted us permission to operate and maintain the city's sewer infrastructure. The district serves pretty much the entire LA County through six service areas. We have 200-plus employees spread out throughout the county. Temple City is located within our east service area. So just to understand the infrastructure that we're talking about here that we maintain, we're talking about the main sewer line that's located in the street, the line that goes from the properties to the main sewer line, also known as house laterals. Those are actually the responsibility of the property owners. The system we maintain, which is the main in the street, is also known as the collection system, and what that does is it conveys wastewater from properties to larger sewer lines, also called trunk lines, maintained and operated by the Centurion District of LA County. And what this do, they take the wastewater to treatment plants for treatment and disposal. It goes without saying that municipal sewer systems make our modern way of life possible. In addition, they do protect public health, they ensure environmental protection, and they also help our cities grow in a sustainable and resilient manner, so their proper operation and maintenance is critical. The services provided by the district can be grouped into three main categories. We offer preventative maintenance, which is things like sewer line cleanings. We respond to requests for things like manhole concerns, orders, pests. We also provide compliance with regulations for the cities in the district. And in addition, we also conduct assessments of the sewer lines on a regular basis. Along with the assessments that we do conduct, we do make recommendations for repairs. We have enhanced asset management that will be used to actually extend the life of the sewer systems. And then, of course, we offer 24-hour emergency response to address things like sewer backups and overflows. Specifically in the city, we have more than 10,000 parcels that we service. This corresponds to about 13,200 seawage units. A seawage unit is the basis on which the sewer service charge is levied, and just for illustration, a seawage unit is equivalent to a single-family home. The city's infrastructure is about 408,000 feet of sewer lines and about 1,800 sewer manholes. We do conduct periodic maintenance, periodic cleaning of the city's sewer lines. We inspect each manhole at least twice a year, and of course, if we find any issues with the system, we would repair that infrastructure for the city. It's important to note that the city does remain the owner of the sewer infrastructure, and what they have done is they have granted permission to the district to operate and maintain on its behalf. Within the city, 88% of the city's sewer infrastructure is actually free from significant structural defects. Of the 12% that were identified to have significant structural defects, the most critical ones have already been repaired, and the rest have been placed on an enhanced maintenance schedule and on a priority list for repair. We do expect it's going to cost close to $1 million to address all the infrastructure needs for the city. In addition, we are beginning a new cycle of condition assessments, which will be used to enhance our priority list by looking at the most critical areas in the infrastructure. So why are we proposing new rates for the district? We have had the same sewer service rates since 2014, so basically for the last 11 years, we've had stagnant revenues, and of course, we all know that costs have gone up. Cost of labor, cost of materials, cost of construction, those have all gone up significantly. The cost of labor alone has gone up more than 60% in the last 10 years. So we are finding ourselves in a situation where it's costing more to maintain the system but with the same level of revenue that we've had for the last 11 years. This is a snapshot of the district's financials. On the right, what you see is a graph that shows revenues shown by the blue line, expenditures shown by the brown line, and reserves shown by the dashed red line. So what you're seeing there is that for the last few years, our expenditures have been exceeding our revenues, and our reserves are declining. We also call our reserves fund balance, and we expect if we do nothing to enter a negative fund balance at the end of next fiscal year. Important to note that majority of our expenditures are actually for preventative maintenance, condition assessment, and repairs. 90% goes to those two categories. 5% goes to emergency response, another 5% goes to administration costs. Public Works hired an independent third-party consultant to evaluate the district's financials and recommend a sustainable level of funding for the district. The result of this analysis was a rate study, which has been shared with the city staff for the review. And out of this study, we are proposing to increase the current $50 per year per seawage unit fee by $14 per year for three consecutive years, and then by the rate of inflation for another two years. Total increase expected after five years is around $45 or a little bit under $4 a month. So for example, a single-family home that's currently paying about 50/50 per year will be paying about 96 per year after five years. Multi-family residences pay multiples of the seawage units based on the number of units. Businesses will also pay a multiple of the seawage unit based on land use per county code. And these charges are collected on the tax roll. Looking at what others are paying for sewer services in the region, most LA County residents actually have two separate fees for the sewer services. There is a collection charge normally by the Sewer Maintenance District or the city that's shown in blue. The first column shows district member cities such as Temple City, and then the Centurion District will also assess a treatment and disposal charge that's shown in red. As you can see, the district fee is one of the lowest amongst your neighbors. City of Barbank actually maintains its own treatment system, so they combine both charges on one bill. And even after our rate increases, we're going to continue being one of the lowest fees for collection in the region. Many other jurisdictions are going through the same financial analysis, and they're going to be proposing rate increases here in the coming years as well, so we expect some of those to actually go up as well. So it'll still be competitive even after the five years. So for any property-related fees such as sewer fees, Proposition 218 requires certain procedures be followed. Basically, the basic procedures we have to follow is to notify all the affected property owners, give them opportunity and a means to protest the increase, and then, of course, let them know about a public hearing where the increases are going to be considered. We are going above and beyond the requirements of Proposition 218. We are collaborating with community-based organizations, using community analytics to customize our messages. We are targeting difficult-to-reach constituents and working with communities to co-create materials using their communication channels, and then also for multilingual support for the areas where it's needed. Main goal here obviously is to allow us to communicate to our constituents what sewer services we provide, what they're paying for, and why a rate increase is needed at this time. Looking at timeline, we did complete our rate study in January of this year. Starting in February, March through April, we initiated our outreach activities by attending community events, scheduling presentation, and just tabling different organizations' events. Early this month, Proposition 218 notices did go out to all district customers. Most of them should have received it by now. On the notice, there's information about how they can engage with Public Works as we go through this process. We're going to have public open houses, community meetings, and webinars to address any questions that the constituents might have. On June 24th, there will be a public hearing where the board of supervisors will consider if a majority protest exists against the rate increases, and if none exists, they would approve the rate increases, which would become effective in July of this year and would show up on the property tax roll, on the 25, 26 tax roll. So that kind of shows the type of 218 notices that your constituents should have received. Like I mentioned, includes information about the services we provide, contact information if they have any questions. There's a contact number that has a hotline that has multilingual support for those who need it, and then, of course, opportunities to engage, open houses, how to protest, and of course, the public hearing date, and how to attend the public hearing. We're happy to answer any questions from the community. There's an email and phone number they can actually reach us. There's an email and phone number they can actually reach us on. Like I mentioned, that has multilingual support, different languages. But in the event of an emergency, we do offer 24-hour support to our cities, member cities, and the number is up there. Really looking forward to our continued collaboration with the city to ensuring that the system operates at a high level as it has been. And that is my presentation. Happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, very informative.
Remind us what district we're in, what district are we in?
So this is for the Sanitation District or?
Well, I'm just, you have a list on the, hand out outreach events, and you have like district, which district?
Oh, that's a sub-district, so a sub-district one.
We're District One?
Yes. The first part of the district. But that's just a location for the outreach events. Within the district, it's all one district.
Okay, I'm sure I got my answer, but trying to figure out, somebody asked us where we, where would we go?
It's supervisory district, right?
It's just sub-district.
Five, okay. So they, that's the one that's going to be, it's hard to read.
The closest one to us is probably San Dimas.
San Dimas, yeah. And then Stevenson Ranch, okay.
Thank you.
William, did you have a question?
No.
I just had one. When you spoke about the defects, what are the defects?
So it's, we do a condition assessment using cameras, and they assess it based on a structural rating. So structural rating of four or five, that will be considered significant. And that basically means that the sewer line has a probability of failure within the next 10 to 15 years. So it has to be addressed within that time.
And in addition to that, Mayor Sternquist, we receive a report from the County Sanitation District as well, which then I pass over to our team at TransTech, who takes a look at it and gives their kind of independent assessment as well. But we really do rely on the experts from the Sanitation District. And if you can see the amount of spills we've had, I mean, we have that number available for staff, and we do not have a ton of spills. It's an older infrastructure throughout parts of the city, but it is maintained very well because of the fact that the County Sanitation District does that biannually. It really helps us get ahead of the curve on a lot of our fixes. So there's nothing to worry about in terms of, there's imminent failures that are coming. If there are imminent failures, they would address those, and we would see those early.
Well, actually, I do have a question, Madam Mayor, may I ask? Since Mr. Montgomery is with us. Because your district mainly function is maintenance, right? Even though you do cameras every, twice a year, and then we'll do the repair work. But ultimately, like you said, the city is the owner of this sewer line. So should there be major work that's required, say, in replacement of a sewer line or enlarging a sewer line because of needs and so forth? That cost is not handled by your district, am I right?
That is correct. So any capacity-related improvements such as enlarging the sewer line or any, you know, the city just decides that they wanna change, like, you know, miles of sewer lines, that's not gonna be under the district. But point repairs, so if like a line breaks, if a line is cracked or blocked or whatever reason, that's gonna be under the district.
Great.
Thank you for clarifying that. The last time the city had done that was, I think, 2000, or the early 2010s along Longdon.
So these are, the rate increases are the ones we vote on at the Sanitation District, correct? By district, or is that?
No.
How does that, how are they separated, I guess, with the rate increase?
This, the, with your sanitation, with your role in the Sanitation District, I have to go back on that. I'm not exactly sure, maybe Councilmember you?
Or maybe, maybe Mr. Montgomery can clarify, one is for treatment, one is for maintenance of lines.
Okay, that's, that's the difference.
Yeah, so, of course, some districts just does the collection, conveys it to the Sanitation District. And that's why I mentioned that there's two charges, one for collection and one for treatment.
Okay, and so sanitation is doing the treatment?
Correct.
Got it.
Thank you. Actually, one question. Andrew, in the pie chart where you showed the percentage of, I think you called it significant repairs within the city, it was around 12% or so. And then you also showed a subset of completed repairs. So can you help us understand, so we can convey to our residents, is there a better way to understand the projected timeline for the remaining repairs that would affect the constituents? That way, there could be more of a nexus between the rate increase is bringing you this. Is there a way that that can be?
It's something we can provide, but we have a priority list for the entire district. So obviously, we're gonna begin with the worst segments of infrastructure. So for example, I'll go back to this slide. So, you know, about like, you know, 16% of the worst segments of the city have already been addressed. So we've kind of gone around the whole district and picking the most critical infrastructure that needs to be addressed and getting that done. We are committing to spend about $5 million every year just addressing this infrastructure as a result of the condition assessment. So the city's infrastructure will be a high priority, but it's gonna be combined with other infrastructure in the district that also is a high priority.
Okay. Yeah, I think if I could ask the city manager to see if there's additional information.
Certainly.
In case we get asked about it, then we'd at least know how to maybe answer if it's something easy on your behalf. And it also kind of helps us understand if we get asked questions about that, too.
Yeah, that's a fair question.
Yeah. And also related to this, from your perspective, like at a network level, do you expect that percentage of significant, most significant, to grow over time? Or is the rate increases allows the district to kind of catch up and kind of keep things either decreasing that, the defect rate percentage of the pie? Is it gonna shrink with the rate increases, or do we still expect that to continue to grow?
So it will, it will shrink, but obviously, as infrastructure ages, you know, we'll have to address more and more of it. But we do expect that it's gonna shrink after we address the most critical part of it. And there are actually other times when we will go in and, you know, say a line, something that's not as significant, if we know it's gonna extend the life of that segment much longer than it would if it wasn't lined. So in a way, kind of preventative maintenance to lengthen the life of that segment.
Thank you.
Tom?
Why has the county waited 14 years to do a rate increase?
You know, it's unfortunate circumstance. We did plan rate increases in the past, probably around 2019, 2020. And then the pandemic happened, and we've just had to keep postponing. And we're just going to the point where, you know, we can't wait any longer.
So in your graphs, it looks like we're covered until 2030, correct?
Correct.
And then we probably should look for another rate increase around that time, I would imagine?
Yeah, I mean, we will continue.
We're not gonna wait another 14 years.
We're not gonna wait 14 years, no. But we will continuously look at.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not.
See, when am I gonna be mayor again? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
You, too.
Thanks so much.
Okay, we move to item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The city council will now hear public comments regarding items. Is there anyone who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? I don't see anyone, so we can close public comments. We move to item seven, the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion, it's been seconded. We have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay, it's approved unanimously. We move to item, are we eight? Public hearing, none. Unfinished business, none. Ten, new business, none. Item 11, update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist and members of the council. I just wanted to note one item that was on the consent calendar for tonight was 7J, which was a street rail paving project awarded to Onyx Paving. This will be one of our last major projects that we do for many, many years because of the resources that we have to do street infrastructure and street repaving projects. We do need another revenue source to assist us to get the rest of the cities that are in fair to poor condition back up with a higher rating, what's called a PCI pavement condition index. But this will be one of the last large projects we do for quite some time, just to let you know. But thank you for approving that tonight. And we did two items with that as well. We split it between our residential streets and then with cart, grind, and overlay, which is kind of the traditional, one with a added alternate bid, meaning that we wanted to see what the bids would be for doing something called ARAM, which is essentially a different type of way of layering pavement on top of existing conditions. And then the other one is to do all of Santa Anita Boulevard, which is using Prop C funds, which is something we've been trying to do for the last few years. It's a restricted funding source that is only for streets that have bus routes. So, thank you for that. That's it for tonight, ma'am. And we are gearing up on the budget, so we will set some budget hearings relatively soon. But the city is on a strong financial foundation. I know we're hearing from many communities throughout, and you hear from the city of LA and the county of Los Angeles, with some struggles they're having financially. But we are starting to see some leveling out of growth in our revenue sources. But I'm, will be, you'll be pleased with the proposed budget from staff as to kind of the firm financial foundation the city has been on. And that is attributable to the good work of staff, but also your very conservative approach over the last many decades to put the city on firm financial ground. So with that, that's it for me tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Update from our city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, tomorrow through Friday, I'll be in Burlingame with many of the city attorneys in California for our annual conference. I'll be hearing about items like housing, homelessness, land use, municipal tort updates. It's a good chance for us to get together and kind of compare where everybody is. So hopefully, I'll have some good news for you in two weeks. But if not good news, at least interesting news. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any? Tom?
I don't have a report. I just wanted to let council know that we do have a date set. Mayor Pro Tem Man and I are going to be interviewing some applicants for the commissioner recruitment. That's set for May 23rd, which I believe is a Friday, Friday afternoon. So more information, I'm sure, on that, after that, after that process. We had a few applicants also, so it's encouraging.
Good. Go ahead. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mayor Sternquist and I did meet with SWA and city staff on two items. The kickoff for the Sereno kind of open space concept. So we did go through a number of items related to kind of our public outreach goals, where we want to start, how we want to get that going. So it was very encouraging to kind of see that moving. And I'm certain that's gonna be brought back to council for additional information as that's being developed.
And the sign?
And the sign, yes. And great news on the Live Oak Park sign, that we had been going back and forth for a couple of meetings. And SWA, I think in our opinion, came through and have some exciting options for council to consider. And both the mayor and I were in agreement with which one we thought was good, but we felt it was appropriate for it to be brought back to council for final approval.
When is that coming back? Is that in two weeks? Next?
Next meeting.
Mr. Matsumoto just said next meeting, so next meeting.
Okay, perfect.
No peacocks on that?
No.
Okay.
Not Arcadius.
No dragons, no.
I had a comment, if you don't mind, on the Sereno Drive. So are we, are we going to be getting feedback from the community on that? Are we having meetings?
Yes, that was part of the discussion that the staff, Mr. Matsumoto and SWA, had with Mayor Sternquist and Mayor Pro Tem Man. So yes, we will be engaging in some community outreach.
Because the reason I asked, I had an interesting talk with a neighbor who lives two doors down from that location. I was kind of outlining to her a little bit about what we had thought about. And she indicated that she wasn't too happy with, we don't have any plans yet, but I told her, well, you're gonna get the opportunity to make your mind heard and stuff.
Sure.
All right, good.
And I think so much of it is just, they're not educated on what the plans are, and...
Well, they hear park and they already.
Yes, and then it's, oh my goodness, more traffic and...
Traffic and everything.
We went through a pretty extensive exercise with the surrounding neighbors when we did Primrose Park, in particular to deal with their concerns about safety and other components. So while this is a different design team than Primrose Park, we will, this, SWA has done an outstanding job of community outreach with both of our playgrounds prior, so we have a lot of confidence in the team.
Yeah, I think to your concern, what was discussed was targeted outreach in the immediate vicinity of that space.
Be the best. They're the ones that are gonna be most affected, obviously.
And we actually, excuse me, we actually suggested that they go a little bit further than just the surrounding area.
Good, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Chen?
Nothing for us.
Councilmember Yu?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Yu. I mean, ma'am. Okay, item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Chavez?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Chen?
Yes, last week I attended the CALCCA, which is the California Community Choice Aggregate Conference, as part of my service on this council with the Clean Power Alliance. Very educational conference, learned a lot. Last Thursday at our Clean Power Alliance meeting, we also set the rates for the following year. So whereas this year, we have had seen zero difference when compared to Edison, I think this upcoming year, we'll see a slight decrease, approximately 2%. So assuming the bill is $189, a Temple City average resident at our Clean Power subscription will see about a $184 bill. That's given, the, that's also factored into the PCI, which is the exit fee that the customers, the cities that sign on to the Clean Power Alliance had to include as part of their rates when compared to the Edison rates. So kudos to this council for, I think, selecting that rate as our entry into the Clean Power Alliance and just continuing to bring information back. I think they're in a very strong financial position compared to the rest of the community choice aggregates throughout the state. Clean Power Alliance, one of the largest, and I'm learning a lot from that assignment. So that'll, that'll be all.
Good, happy you're enjoying it.
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Nothing, thank you, Madam.
Okay, just one item I received, just to, oh, did I miss you? I did, because you had just spoken, so I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist. Just a couple of things. I want to extend a shout-out for the Easter egg hunt from our Parks and Rec. What I really liked about it was the new setup. Because I think if you've been to any of our previous ones, there was a little bit of sense of chaos when the kids all rushed in to, for the eggs. And I thought the way we did it this year was really organized, and it really allowed the kids to participate. and it really allowed the kids to participate. Because we all joke that the most disruptive part of the Easter egg hunts are actually the parents, not the kids. So this was a great way of filtering out the parents and allowing the kids to do what they, what they do. So kudos to Director Matsumoto and all the staff who did a phenomenal job out there. And it was well-attended, as, as usual. Second thing, I know a couple of us attended the Chamber Legislative Lunch with Congress Member Judy Chu, so that was also a good event. She always brings back very relevant and pertinent information to share with us, and there was a pretty big segment of the community and constituency in attendance, so happy to see that. I also had a chance to join our partners from World Journal. They had a small Mother's Day celebration, so we partook in that and got a chance to catch up with some of our friends there, and they always look forward to working with us, and especially, they, they always say how, I, I really want to say this, they always comment on how professional our staff is when working with them on the Moon Festival. So I want everyone from the park side and our city manager to, to know and understand that. So thank you for that great work that you do. And one other thing is, I know this coming Saturday, Congress Member Judy Chu has artistic discovery awards, and I think we all received the information that two of the awardees are from Temple City High School, and I actually saw that these certificates were made. But if I may make a suggestion to the mayor, that perhaps we invite them to one of our future council meetings to present these instead of bringing it over. Because I, I did have a chance to talk to her, her staff and asked what the program was, and I don't think there's really a moment for us to do this, even though they said that sometimes city officials or, or school districts might bring it.
We did that last year. Because we, you know, we brought them here.
We brought them here, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, yeah, so I just want to make, make sure we, we do the same thing. Yeah, so I'll, I'll keep this with, with the mayor.
Okay, perfect. And I will be attending, I don't know if anyone else is, but please come if you can. All right.
Ed, you're not going?
It's baseball season.
Okay, I just have one thing. One of the, I think it was Liz or Ann spoke about the, the Loa Senior luau, and I got an invitation to my email for all of us, and it says Brian Cook, too, and I can extend that to even our city attorney if he'd like to come to the luau. But it is, the senior group is doing a luau at the park.
Temple City is?
Yes.
Why didn't we all get that invitation?
Well, I think they haven't maybe formally sent it out, and maybe just, it, it says, please let the council know.
Who's that from?
This came from Helen, Helen Fung.
I don't know who Helen Fung is.
She...
Here's what I found.
Maybe don't talk into your phone.
No, that was his phone.
That was my watch.
Yeah, his phone.
Don't talk into his watch.
That was my watch.
Adam, you want to tell us about it?
Scary.
It's August 8th, from 5:00 to 7:30.
Oh, well, not till August.
But I think she wanted us to put it in, on our calendar so that we could attend.
It sounds like maybe we had some staff just trying to get some information out prior to us formally doing that, but we'll be getting information out to all the council, probably sometime more so in June and July, prior to the August Senior Luau. So it is something that we do annually as part of...
Yeah, and I think Liz mentioned it.
Yes, last year's event, so, but there'll be formal invitations that go out prior to.
Didn't we go last year and you did the hula?
Brian was the winner of the hula contest, yes.
Oh, my goodness.
With support from some of our other councils as well.
All right, well, that's all I have, so if you can, put that, reserve that date in your calendar.
You know, before, I'm sorry, but you mentioned August, which is, that's not that far away.
No.
But does everybody get the date for the next joint meeting with the school district?
I got that today.
That's in like March of next year.
2026.
I don't even have a calendar that goes that far ahead, but it was a little premature, I thought.
We did it for JPIA.
Especially you and them.
2026.
Yeah, I, I just thought I'd mentioned it. Yeah, well, I wanted to put it on my calendar, but I had no calendar to put it on. But hopefully, there'll soon as another reminder, we get within a year.
Okay.
All right.
Well, don't say I didn't tell you about the August.
I got it, I wrote it down.
All right. So we move to item 15, additional public comments, not listing on the agenda. Anyone? Nope. Okay, so close public comment, and item 16 is we are adjourned.